I will call the meeting to order. And we have a couple items on the agenda tonight that folks may be here to talk about. If you're here to talk about an item that is on the agenda, we would ask that you wait until that agenda item comes up. If you're here to talk about something that's not on the agenda, that your opportunity comes right about now. So comments from the public on items not on the agenda. Does anyone wish to comment? All right, great. I should have said it's nice to see some folks here. It's unusual for us. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there anything that board members wish to have pulled from the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull the minutes or just I believe that the-
Which ones?
The 21st, the 20th.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let me testify.
Okay. So we'll pull the minutes and we'll knock them high. Anything else that needs to be pulled? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, which now consists of approval of the recommendations for professional appointments and approval of warrants.
Martha, I would move-
Oh, yes, thank you. I didn't say who the professional appointments were.
I moved that we move the consent agenda consisting of the items: professional appointments, the recommendation for professional appointments of Elizabeth, I think it's Kaiti or Kelty, the EMS math teacher, and Janet Batteig, EMS special ed teacher, and approval of warrants.
Okay, great. So this is a consent item, so there's no discussion. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Of those saying nay. All right, so we pull the minutes.
What I would like to add to that summary is the definition of PLC, because reading it through, if someone doesn't know what that term is, they'd stumble, and I don't think that's fair to the reader.
Okay, so the suggestion is that we amend the minutes by adding the professional-
Learning community.
... the first time that PLC appears in the minutes. Does everyone agree? Are we ready for a motion?
Kim?
I was just actually trying to check there quickly. Did we include Nick's statement that he read on behalf of the students?
In the minutes?
In the minutes. I don't know that I see it as an attachment.
I did not get them. I do not have a copy.
Okay. Is that something that we could ask that we attach to the minutes?
Yeah.
And that's something Nick can share and we'll pass along to Kim?
He should share it with Kim or Marla, either way. Okay, very good suggestion. All right, so we have, there are the two amendments. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of February 20th with the two amendments that we have spoken about, adding a definition for PLC the first time it appears, and adding a link to Nick's statement. So, Kim, let's meet discussion. All those in favor say aye. The next item on the agenda is student initiatives discussion. Unfortunately, I don't see any students hearing that. Do you believe there are students coming?
I think Michelle is, well, Michelle said she was coming, and she's one of the leaders, the student organizers of the walkout, so I think she, I just texted her to see if she's on her way. Hopefully she is.
She's not here, that's why she's driving.
I don't know.
I think what I'll suggest is that we move on to the next agenda item and come back to this after Michelle has had a chance to get here. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. So our next agenda item is a resolution on gun-related violence prevention. This is a board initiative. Kim, do you want to say a couple of words?
We were beat aware of a resolution that, and we spoke a little bit about it before break, that I believe it's Addison Northeast had put before their board to-
Addison Central.
Uh, Central, I'm sorry, there's a lot of these directional school districts, larger school districts now, that they had put before their board to speak to the notion of safety in schools in a somewhat more direct manner, to just ask that the legislature consider seriously the things that are before them at this time. And that, of course, was, I think, prompted by the actions in Florida on Valentine's Day. So we discussed as a board if that was something we might have an interest in. There was a majority interest in doing something similar. We modified that resolution to reflect our community minorly. We spoke with them, and they were fine with us using large parts of their resolution. I know there are a few other districts around us who have also taken action on a resolution to send a message to our representatives. And it was in line with, I think, the message we also heard from students through Nick, through his statement after the incident at our last meeting.
Thanks. I think, well, I'm not usually picky about this, but why don't we get a motion on the table and have some discussion?
I'll make that motion to discuss.
To approve?
To approve.
Okay. So Andre makes the motion to approve the resolution, and it is now open for discussion. And there may be folks in the audience who want to comment on this. If they're up here, our procedure is that board members ask questions and make comments first, and then I'll open it up to the audience if someone in the audience has a comment before we take action. Okay? So thoughts, comments? Marla?
I have two main issues. One is, for quite a few years, we've been working very hard on behavioral issues and mental health issues. So I'm a little sad that we're not pushing harder for that and promoting that as hard as we're pushing that. The second thing is, it is still the person that uses the guns, that will use the bombs, that will use the knives. My sister shot herself. The gun didn't kill her, she killed herself. So I just, I, you know, I agree with the rational things, but I wish as a board, we could also impart of the motion, I would like to see us working harder on the behavioral and the mental issues.
I just wonder if you should read it.
I don't know if the people who are here tonight have had a chance to read it, and I don't know if the viewing audience, so I'm just-
Shouldn't we read it out loud? Should we just-
I don't know, up to you, but I, to read it out loud?
That would be great.
Okay. You want me to read it?
Sure.
I do. Tell me if I start to scream. So this is to Governor Phil Scott, Speaker Mitzi Johnson, or Tim Ash from the Essex-Westford School Board, RE, Resolution Related to Action on Gun-Related Violence Prevention. Whereas gun-related violence at American public schools, including frequent mass shootings like the one last month in Parkland, Florida, in which 17 staff members and students were killed, have reached epidemic levels. And whereas our schools in Vermont are not immune to both the possibility and reality of such gun-related violence and mass shootings, as evidenced by the 2006 shooting at our Essex Elementary School, the threat of violence at Essex High School last year, significant threats of violence last year against students at South Burlington High School, and most recently, the thwarting of a plan for a mass shooting at Fairhaven High School. And whereas Vermont school children spend increasingly more time participating in lockdown and active shooter drills, now more common than fire drills, detracting from time spent on critical classroom learning and invoking significant anxiety and fear among students and teachers. And whereas Vermont school districts are forced to spend larger and larger portions of their limited budgets on security-related facilities upgrades, security personnel trainings, and drills to defend our students, staff, and community members against military-style attacks on our students, staff, and school buildings. And whereas students have the right to attend school free from the fear of death or injury as a result of gun-related violence. And whereas parents have the right to send their children to a school in which they have confidence in their children's physical, psychological, and emotional safety. And whereas communities have a right to protection against mass violence and abhorrent tragedy as a result of gun-related violence. And whereas we are local elected officials charged with ensuring that the education, health, and safety of students on behalf of parents and our community, and strive to build interpersonal, school, and community connections so that every student feels valued and safe. We, the Board of the Essex-Westford School District, declare it resolved that our elected officials in the Vermont House and Senate must pass common sense gun violence prevention legislation during the 2018 legislative session, and that Governor Scott must sign such legislation into law to take effect immediately. Four relevant pieces of legislation are currently before the Vermont House or Vermont Senate. S-6, related to universal background checks. H-422, related to removing guns from the scene of a domestic violence crime. S-221, related to enabling law enforcement officers to get an order to remove guns when a person shows sign of threat and danger. And H-876, related to prohibiting bump fire stocks for firearms. We urge careful consideration of these and similar bills. In addition, we urge the drafting and passage of legislation that has been proposed in previous legislative sessions, which would prevent the possession, sale, or manufacture of military-style assault weapons. Such weapons are commonly used in mass shootings at schools, resulting in tragic and widespread devastation and death. It is long past due when inaction is ethically or morally acceptable. We need you to help us keep our students in schools safe from gun-related violence.
Other comments or questions from board members?
To pick up where Marla left off, I see where you're coming from. This isn't like the first thing on my list of things that I would write to the state legislators about, but I think it is very important to try to address all facets of the problems that we encounter. And no real action has been taken to regulate weapons. Whereas we are trying on things like mental health, and we can try as a school system to support children who are encountering mental health issues, there's not much that we can do about what's available to them in terms of weapons. So the people to deal with that are the legislators. And I think this takes the right tone in simply encouraging the legislature to consider the bills that they have before them, rather than like trying to write legislation ourselves, which I think would be inappropriate.
Other questions, comments from the board?
I think I would just say, again, sort of as I had introduced, while it was the original idea of a different school district, I think it isn't really about our personal feelings on weapons or the Second Amendment for that matter. As I sit here at this table, it's about how we do our best to provide a safe environment for student learning and what we might, it doesn't feel as though particularly with the grave results of loss of life in our own school district, that silence doesn't feel right in our responsibilities as board members. It also feels as though we heard without any request from our student board member, because he was hearing from so many students about their concerns, that they are asking for us to advocate on their behalf for things they feel might help them feel safe in their schools. I think that is, in fact, the frame and the responsibility that we need to consider this under.
Thank you, Kim.
I still believe that more needs to be done on the issues that cause people to do the acts of violence. And just because we as a board are doing this, it doesn't mean the state is doing everything they can. From personal experience, it's just the help isn't there at the state level. And I think as a board, if we're going to talk about this, we should in the future be talking about what else could occur to help the students to prevent it from happening to begin with. I also would feel like this if my child was in school. I think we have to be careful not to give a sense false of security, because we're advocating for one thing, I just don't think people should, people should still remain on guard, you know? I just, I know we need to protect the students, I agree with that. I agree wholeheartedly with that. I just think there's some pieces missing, and I don't want to give the community a false, or the students, a false sense of security, because I really don't think it's there with all that's going on nowadays.
So my point, I'll speak for myself and say, I don't see this as a kind of, as Kim says, I see this as one thing the board can do. And I think there is enough evidence out there to say that when other countries or other societies have limited access to weapons, it has made a difference. It doesn't take away our responsibility to continue to focus on the mental health issues that our students have. And I believe that is an important focus in our school and in ours this afternoon. Anything else from board members before I open it up to the audience? Anyone in the audience wish to comment on the resolution?
Martha, I'm sorry, just, I'm wondering, Nick had asked me before we started if he should reread his statements from the students from last week, so I don't know if that's either necessary or helpful for those in the audience to hear what the students, you have it right now?
I think he should.
Okay, that would be great. Is that okay?
Sure.
Sorry to interrupt. Thanks, Nick.
Armed violence is an extremely inflammatory and sore issue in our school. In fact, seven students outside of student government who don't know me personally approached me to bring their opinions up to everyone here. This is a quick analysis I drew up on behalf of the student body. There are false rumors that have been percolating throughout our school, speculating about alleged shooters. This was especially, this was rampant, especially after the Florida shootings. Detailing info like who they may be or when they will strike, reflecting student failings of vulnerability. These rumors have, after the school shooting, that is, were so prevalent that Mr. Edin actually had to get in our school intercom and denounce them. The fear in our school, though speculative, is not unfounded. Remember on August 24th, 2006, in Essex Elementary School, how Christopher Williams killed teacher Alyssa Shanks and injured Mary Schnedeker as he searched for his former girlfriend who worked in the school at the time? Around 39 faculty and staff were intending an in-service day when Williams arrived and began shooting. On a personal note, my mom had a meeting in the school, and had she shown up an hour before she did, she would have been in the school during the shootings. Last year, a suspect who said he was armed with both explosives and firearms indicated that he was going to do harm to Essex High School unless police met his demands. During the police shakedown, many, many students, including me, had loaded firearms, loaded assault firearms, that is, waved in our face, waved in our face. An onslaught of fear is logical seeing this national increasing trend of school shootings, and given the clouded history of our school system and armed violence, nothing is out of the question. This leaves students frightened and disenfranchised. A lot of the fright comes from the anonymity and the randomness of the school shooting. All it takes is one person in his AR to rack up seven kills of innocent students at his local public school system. Currently, the best defense students have is that of statistics, relying on the probability that this person will choose to another school, not theirs to strike. Needless to say, the insidious possibility of a school shooter is non-conducive to a healthy learning environment. Many, many Essex High School students are livid on behalf of the teens who died in Florida and are going to participate in national school demonstrations, particularly the school walkout on March 14th and the March for Our Lives walk on March 24th. Though students understand that there's not a lot of, there's not a lot in our, the school board's jurisdiction, they fully expect us to uphold their safety to the greatest extent possible.
Thanks, Nick. So are there folks in the audience who would like to comment? Yes?
I'm Ray Garofano, resident of Essex. I have a child at Essex Elementary School, and I'm delighted that you guys are taking this up, and it's a really important issue, and I think that we need to applaud the students that are using their voices and their stuff to the community.
Remarkable leadership from the students, and I think we need to listen to them. And it is true that our personal opinions about our Second Amendment rights in this country are irrelevant here. I don't think anybody is trying to take anybody's guns away. I think that we want common sense laws on guns and violence in schools and everywhere else, frankly. I mean, I think we're in a society right now that violence is prevalent, it's around us, and it just makes sense, especially for our children from elementary school all the way up to high school. So thank you for your leadership in this.
Thanks. Anyone else who would like to speak on this?
Hi, Lori Oaten, I'm one of the state representatives for Essex Junction at my hearing, just have stuff on me. So a couple things, one, I just also want to reiterate what Ray said, and thank you for taking this up. Sometimes we work in a silo in Montpelier, and so it's really important that we hear from everyone, including the youth, so I really appreciate that. I'm really, two things, or one thing on the resolution, we did have some action last week in both bodies of the House, and so there are two new bills that should be referenced, H-675 and S-55. And if anyone needs more information, I can send it to someone, but I think it's very important to include those, because those will be the two bills taken up when we get back.
S-65?
S-55 and H-675. So thank you for your time on this. And to Marla's point, we know there's more than the gun issue. And we do work in silos down there, but I can say we are all coming around to understanding we do need to do more in the state with our mental health system. We are at a crisis with that, separate from the gun issue, and we do understand that and take it seriously. So thank you.
Thanks, Marla. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes.
Hi, Kathy Bridgen from Essex Town. I have two kids in the high school, and I wish we'd done this a long time ago, so I applaud you for doing it now. And my question is, are other, are other schools and other boards doing this along with you? Is this kind of a movement, so we're not, I'd love to see more boards get on board?
I'm aware of Addison Central, Champaign East, and Burlington have done this. I would assume it's going to spread. I don't know how many boards will do it. Anything else? Yes?
My name's Heather Hammack, and I have two children in Essex Junction at Summit. And I'm also a preschool teacher, and my husband's a professor at UBM. And I think when we both went into those professions, we had no idea that we were entering professions that nowadays seem so dangerous. I've been in a little tiny bathroom with 14 four-year-olds. I know what it feels like. I know that they are giggling because they're nervous, or they're so shoved in there, they're accidentally turning on the hand dryers. And all I can think in my mind is, that child giggling could get us killed. These doors aren't made to be bulletproof. And I think anything we can do to make it harder for people to have access to guns is well worth it. And I think about how in a preschool setting, when a child's really, really angry, the first thing you have to do is help contain their anger, but you also make sure that you're in a safe environment where there aren't knives hiding around or something that they can use to be aggressive towards others. We try to sort of control the environment that they're in, and I think it would be helpful to be able to extend that to people who are having mental troubles or are very angry and do things that they probably regret later.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Liz, do you want to make an amendment to the motion?
Sure, I can make that. I'd like to amend the resolution to add the additional bills currently being considered, H-675, an act relating to conditions of release prior to trial, and S-55, an act relating to the disposition of unlawful and abandoned firearms.
Okay. All right, are we ready for a vote? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. Okay, one more poll.
Great.
Have you heard from Michelle?
I haven't. I don't know where she is. I could give the update she gave me, or maybe Rob could do that?
Sure.
Would that be-
And Nick might be able to fill in.
And Nick has some information, too.
Okay. So let's go back to the agenda. And so what we were hoping for tonight was an update on what the students were thinking of the Black Lives Matter flag, which, as many of you know, has been raised at Montpelier High School and Burlington High School. And I think there is a group of students here who have started a petition to ask the board to do that here. I'm reluctant to take any action tonight without the students here to talk about it, so I'm going to suggest that we put this on our next agenda. I do think there are, Rob, you can update us on that. I do think there is a more formal plan for what the students want to do on March 14th. I do think there is a more formal plan for what the students want to do on March 14th. So this is a matter of information for the board, and perhaps a chance for us to suppress our support for what the students want to do. Rob?
Okay, so Michelle Dolling and Amelia Duffy are the two students who have spearheaded the move for the March 14th meeting. You should know and be proud that they, and the group of students that they're leading, met February 22nd. They came during vacation February 28th, and met from 10:00 AM to about noon. We had a meeting yesterday and a brief one after school today. So, so far, and there's more to come, the students are planning, and I should say, as soon as we got back from break, they met with the CTE Student Council, because of course, CTE students are part of this campus as well. So the students' plan now is to, on March 14th at 10:00 AM, to walk out to the football field and have an 18-minute time period in terms of silence and reflection for the 17 minutes for the students and the staff that were killed, and one minute for all that were injured. At three-minute intervals, they're going to have student speakers. There's more to come on that, because when we met this afternoon, I was trying to get a little more specifics in terms of, you know, numbers and what they were thinking to support them. The administration is happy to support their abilities and interest in speaking and taking up this cause, and we're there to make sure that everybody's safe. So I am pleased with what they have planned so far. After the student speakers finish, then those that choose to participate will silently walk back into school and go back to class. So that is the update as of 2:30 this afternoon for that piece, March 14th.
Thanks, Rob. Would you talk about students who choose not to participate?
Yeah, so students, it is a choice, and classes will be running. Teachers will be in their classrooms teaching. And so if students choose not to participate, they'll be in class as normal. We're trying to make this minimal disruption. Students have a choice to remain in class or to participate, and we want to make sure that those that choose to participate do it in a safe manner. And I'd say the leadership that's been exhibited so far has been outstanding, which coincides with Jamal and Tess and their work with student government, certainly, you know, what you see with Nick here on the school board. So you should be proud of the K-12 journey these kids are on and showing the leadership that they do. Very impressive.
Thank you.
Yep.
Questions from the board members?
Students that like not to return to classes, what will be their consequences?
Yeah, so it would be like a normal, a normal day where a student would be unburied. Yeah, there's no, there's no heightened consequence or diminished, I mean, it's just unexcused. And we've also, because some of you may be wondering, well, what about the students that might try to use the parking lot to go to Dunkin' Donuts? Well, that would be treated just like if they tried that today, or a week ago, or whatever. Yeah.
Kim?
Do we have a sense, in that teachers also died in the incident, teachers' feelings about not being able to participate in the walkout? That was something, that teachers aren't able to participate in the walkout? Is that, do we?
Well, my feeling is this is a student-led activity for students and student safety and their response to violence. And teachers need to be available to students who choose not to participate, and they follow their schedule. That's my, that's been my lead on this.
And I'm also, this is a plan for the students who stay, and I'm not suggesting that they shouldn't be that, I just.
I'm also sensitive to the fact that it was more than just students that died in that tragedy. So that was one of the things my daughter happened to mention, that she was concerned about for teachers' sake. But it might not be that teachers are feeling that way, it was just a reflection.
We had a couple of faculty meetings after Parkland where we discussed a lot of things. And the teachers, pretty much unanimously in our faculty meeting, feel that this is indeed a student effort and a student experience. So they want to provide support for those that choose not to participate. We don't want to feel, we don't want to make students that choose not to participate to feel that they have to participate in an adult-led act, which is not appropriate.
Have you considered if the entire class walks out, what the teacher's responsibility is at that point?
Right now, we've told them to just stay in the room in case someone were to circle back.
I think it's probably important to remember, too, that adults have an opportunity on March 24th, and so I think having this student focus might be really important. Other questions from the house?
I just have an addition, just to the student-led, the student-led piece of it. There are, Michelle told me, over 120 people on the, helping her to organize this. So she, she and Amelia are taking the lead, but when you look at the spreadsheet of names and emails of the kids who are helping, it's, it is definitely a very robust group of kids who are, who are pushing this forward.
Wonderful. Other questions, comments? Patrick?
I mean, my comment would be to express my own full support for this. I do want to mention, I think it's unfortunate that the Secretary of Education has tried to discourage these walkouts. It's not a position that I feel is really conducive to the students being able to give their voice for such an important issue. So just speaking from, you know, a single board member perspective, I'm very proud of the community of students that we have, that even though there was some opposition to this, that they are continuing to go forward with it.
I actually think, and others may have read it differently, so I'll speak for myself, but as I read the Secretary of Education's letter, I thought she was concerned about students who would get out and walk out of class and leave the building. I thought she was pretty clear that she was supportive of organized events that would be planned by students. Unfortunately, I think in the press, it has not been interpreted that way. So I would, I would just encourage people to read her letter carefully. Any other comments or questions from the board? Is there any audience who would like to comment or ask Rob a question? Yes?
I'm Tim Fayon. I live in the town as well. I have a daughter that goes to this school and one in EMS. Just wanted to know, on this March 14th walkout, was the timing, the time, the actual time of it corresponding with when it happened down in Parkland, Florida? Or is it a random time that you guys chose? How did that come about? And whether or not, if it doesn't correspond with the time of the event in Parkland, Florida, then why, other than the obvious reason, would you not plan it for, you know, the time school lets out and not have any issues with students feeling they have to take part or not take part? Then there's no issues, because you're either gone home or you're partaking. Then teachers could partake if they wanted to take part, because they weren't mandated to stay in their rooms in case some students wanted to stay back, and so on. It's just, you know, and like your resolution stated, they come here to learn, so maybe you should be in the classroom learning and do this as an extracurricular, no different than a sporting event, or, you know, this meeting right here. You know, it's all relevant. So that's my question.
So my understanding, and I'm not sure exactly who set the date and time, but it is a national movement identified at 10:00 AM, and going with a civil disobedient-type action, I think the students are committed to following what has been set as a national timeframe. I don't, sir, I don't have the specific rationale as to why it's 10:00 AM, but it's certainly nothing that the students here chose as a time, just so that you know that.
Well, that's it. I just, I don't want to take away from the fact that if it's truly to go out there and, and show solidarity to the victims lost in Parkland, Florida, because I feel for them as well as anybody else. However, I think it puts stresses on both sides of the group. The ones that have a strong view of this whole issue, some that know nothing about it, and others that are just kind of rolling with it because it's the biggest thing on social media right now. And so to put it in an after-school situation takes some of that away, is my belief. And we could, yeah, I could roll this on and on and on.
I'm gonna have to catch you off.
No, I have no problem with that.
My two have not business.
I thought I heard, Rob, did you say it's going to be 17 minutes of silence?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Weren't there 17 students killed?
Yeah.
So I'm assuming they're going by the, like, a minute per student, was my assumption.
And I realize that, you said that, 17 minutes for losses.
I'm sorry. I don't want this to get into a back and forth, so if you want to speak, would you ask permission, please? Thanks. Kim?
I just, I pulled up the page, it's, Women's March Youth and Power is calling for student teachers, school administrators, parents, and allies to take part in a hashtag National School Walkout for 17 minutes at 10:00 AM across every time zone on March 14th, 2018. So it's, so that's, the 10 o'clock is the nationwide effort, and the 17 minutes prescribed, and Nick was just saying the 18th minute is for all the other lives lost in similar instances.
Okay. Yes?
Hi there, I'm Beth Knox. I have a student, two students at Summit Street Elementary School here in Essex Junction. And my question is about ADL, or essentially the other schools, so the middle schools and the elementary schools, because I do, I am aware of, you know, educators as well as students and even parents who are considering doing something during this time. So I don't know, curious what your all thoughts are on, on that for the other schools, other than the high school.
We had a discussion as a leadership team yesterday, feels like a week ago, but it was yesterday. And we came to really the conclusion that, and it's, it's my thinking also, that students really need to understand the purpose of going out, and a lot of, and, and we know it's a, it's a sensitive topic, right? We have a lot of students that, at the elementary age, it would be hard concept for them, and I don't want to put a teacher in that position to try to explain that to them and make it more about the adults wanting the walkout than rather having the students wanting the walkout. And so talking with the leadership team, we really came to that conclusion together, and the high school was very willing to get together and organize that, the students, and I right off from the very beginning said, let's support our students in this. I reached out to Rob and Bob from CTE and the middle school principals, because that's the group that I could see wanting to do something and hearing and understanding a little more behind it. But it really is in that safety first and supporting that. So I do know that ADL and EMS, they have had some students come forward, but they've also done a lot of training and other things with student leadership, so, and I haven't had anything formal come from that. A lot of conversations. Jen Wood at ADL, I know, was planning on having conversations and more conversations, and Rebecca Holcomb's memo that came out today was having a talk-out, having students that would like to have a conversation and organize it in that way. And I could see that happening with fourth and fifth graders even, if that's, if that's how they want to react or ask questions. But with a lot of adult support there.
I'm conscious of the time and the amount that we have to get through tonight. So is there one less person who would like to speak? Yes?
I just want to do the walkout.
Could you?
About the, just your name. Anyway, I live in the junction, I have a student at ADL, I want to the high school here, and this has been going around, t-shirt sales here at the school, which I think is kind of inappropriate that they're actually selling this. I don't know. It's, they're selling t-shirts at the school here for the kids for the walkout, which I'm not in favor of. I think it's obviously putting, I don't think that the kids that are not going to go to do the walkout, there's a lot of fear saying, you know, is there going to be extra security out there with the kids that are going to be on the football field? Yes, no? Because it's a perfect target for somebody to come, for those students. That's how a lot of the other kids are feeling. I've had a bunch of girls in my house talking about it. They're not in favor of this at all. They're having the Black Lives Matter petition shoved down their throats, which we should not be having that at the school. I'm sorry. So for them, I think that the ones that are not going to be walking out, it's separating the kids. These are the ones that are in favor, these are the ones that are not. So there's a lot of things on social media going back and forth with the kids, and there is a big fear of something going to happen that day. So as a school, is there going to be extra security for any of those students that are out there? I don't know.
So I can address two things, if I can. So the shirts, the students' interest in the shirts, they ordered 200 last week, so our student population is 1,200, and there's approximately 400 tech center students. So there's 200 shirts that are being sold, and the proceeds are going to be sent to Parkland, to the school down there. Security, we've been in touch with Essex Police, they're aware this is going to be going on. All the administrators from both the tech center and the high school will be out on the periphery supervising, similar to what you would see on a football field, where there's a very, very large crowd. So, and our security personnel, those that we would have typically in the parking lots or the halls, would be assisting as well. So PD is aware, and will be around. And I would reiterate, I'm very pleased that they've chosen to stay on campus, because that's a much safer plan than if they were going to march out. But I did want to say there are 200 shirts, and the proceeds are going to Parkland.
Thank you. Okay. I think I'm going to put that up, this discussion. I think, Nick, did you want to say something?
Just in case, and none of the Black Lives Matter flag advocates came, came up, I did, I did on short notice go out and collect enough information to, you know, to probably get what they're going to say, if any of you would value that, or are you sure on time?
I think I would rather wait till they're actually here than having it second-hand. So I think I would like to put that off.
Yeah, completely understand.
Until they're ready to appear before us.
My only question is, do you want to say why that's a board matter now, or do you want to say at that point?
Well, we could, yes, I guess I could. So in doing some research, what we have found is that the flagpole is under the control of the school district, and it's considered governmental control as opposed to private control or a place where all free speech is allowed. So if the students do come forward and ask to raise a Black Lives Matter flag, then the board can ask that it be raised. We wouldn't be approving what they asked for, we would be saying, we want... We wouldn't be approving what they ask for. We would be saying, we want it raised in response to what they ask. And in reading and hearing legal opinions, we, the board does have the right to control what goes on the flagpole, the board and the school district. Is that what you were thinking for? Okay, great. All right. I'm sorry, um, did, I really would like to save this discussion till the time when the students are able to be here. And I apologize if some of you came expecting the discussion to happen tonight.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you bring these agendas up to the school, but they're not responsible enough to be here for this, and we're taking time out of our, our busy schedules for this meeting. But they're not here to, you know, come forward with this information for us.
I'm gonna, well, honestly, it's a difficult night for all of us because of the weather. But I'm gonna ask if you have something to say that you please mention and be recognized. Kim?
I think the, the thing I would say is that learning as we did and really seeking out today and previous days and in the last couple of weeks, information to understand where our role was as a board in either approving or not approving is important. And so the agenda item really indicated that we were going to, if there was an update on that topic, have it. And at this point, because no request or petition has been brought before us, there's no action to take, except that in doing our due diligence to understand the board's role in that decision, that's been pretty important. And I think beyond that, as we would come to a place of needing to make a decision, if the students, I'm suspecting that they are looking to do that in a thoughtful way, where as they had done the planning for the walkout, which is time-sensitive because it's a national day of recognition, I think we will be interested in being prepared for the time when the students feel they have, you know, either gathered what they feel is important to bring to us, or thought about how they choose to express their support of that movement, whether or not it's on the flagpole. And so I guess I would just indicate that we're addressing that matter as we will need to even moving forward if we have to make a decision, because we'll want to think about what are we applying as standards to all decisions of, of that nature around our governmental property on the flagpole. So it is probably an iterative process, and it should be entered into by both the students and the board pretty mindfully as it's somewhat new chartered territory, and, and I think we're figuring it out.
And the final thing I would say is that we prepare our agendas so we can ask before our meetings. And this was put on the agenda in response to the fact that the discussion had started with the high school, not because any students had yet asked us to have it on the agenda. So we will make certain that it doesn't get on the agenda in the future until students have actually requested it to be on the agenda.
Can I make one more comment, Martha? She was quick.
Yes.
I know, be quick. And it's just to remember that Montpelier and Burlington both, it was a year, the process, before they decided to do that. And it came with a lot of help and support from the community, from student leadership, from parents, and from the community in general. It was a very thoughtful process from beginning to end, and it, and it wasn't, it wasn't a week later they decided. So that's just, we're beginning this process, as Kim just said, and, and it, and it is a process.
Thanks. Oh, dear.
I swear it will be very.
Okay.
So Ray Garofano again from Essex Town. Since you did mention that this is, the flagpole is a school board issue and you have the responsibility, I would really encourage the board to consider raising the flag at all our schools at Essex Westford District to really set us apart as a community that knows that this is important. And it's something that we need all of our children and our whole community to talk and think about, to move that conversation forward.
Let's move on to an update on stop, start times. Beth?
It seems like we should have been rounding in between the two segments.
I'm very sorry, we're not doing budget tonight.
So the, at the last meeting, we came to the board and we looked at a little bit more of just kind of a work document with regards to start and stop time. And, and let me, let me apologize for the process of trying to begin this conversation, because it, it's difficult to begin the conversation simultaneously with all stakeholders. And so I understand that some of the stakeholders, you know, that we're trying to fold this out, but part of it is just beginning the conversation. And, and to try to wrap that back of partly what we have right now, as we've become one and we understand that we're stronger together, that was the merger element to it. We understand there still are some big differences. And some of the differences right now that we have is that starting times, even at same grade levels, are very different. The duration of the school day, even at same grade levels, is very different. The majority of our middle schoolers have the earliest start time in the entire district. That's not supported by much of what we see in brain research and in learning and best practices. And the latest dismissal times are for our youngest learners, where we know there's learner fatigue and there's a process of, you know, we've all have enjoyed raising or interacting with one-year-olds right around three o'clock in the afternoon. So our first graders are around one o'clock in the afternoon. So this is current, and this is really, looking at this tells us that we need to have a discussion about our start and stop times. Going back to August and into September, actually August into July, we talked about transportation in Essex Junction. And we said one of the challenges of that is that we were looking to introduce transportation with making no other structural changes. In fact, we were looking to introduce transportation into a single community without recognizing we are already transporting the majority of students inside of our district. But we were trying to do it in an isolated fashion. So we, we've been, we've been telegraphing the fact that start and stop times was going to have to be discussed. But, you know, I apologize as we've gone along, not everyone has been at the table at every single conversation. But also, we are not changing tomorrow's start time of school. So we're going through the process and trying to engage people. What we see is when we look at this, and we know if, if people have that similar belief, we actually need to do something. Like, there's enough difference and enough variations within same grade levels, is that we need to make some change. Now it's about how much change. And the way that we have been trying to function within this organization is to try to set some of those visions out into the future. If we're going to make a change, let's at least take a few moments to look at the biggest and best change we can make. We may have to come all the way back to the real pragmatic, like, okay, let's just do this. But let's at least take a moment and have some space to at least imagine. So we have three big ideas. One of them is, what if we had common duration? What if you went to kindergarten through second grade and, and another school, people in our district went to kindergarten and second grade, and you actually had the same length of school day? That seems reasonable, and that's where we want to try to do. We also can look at it and see whether it's developmentally appropriate, what is the right duration? But we're saying, wouldn't it be right to look at this so that, that inequity of instructional time, right now, if you're going to school for six and a half hours versus your peer in another second-grade class who's going to school for seven hours, I mean, it cumulatively works out to be the difference of 12 school days a year. And that's not tiny. Time is our biggest constraint. We, we have plenty to teach. It's the time to teach it in is the hard part. And what if we started school later for older kids? I wish I could say that this is brand-new research and it just came out like last month, but this is 20-year research, and it matters. I mean, the, the, this is the American Medical Association, but the Center for Disease Control has talked about what's happening in, in our adolescents with the early start time and the sleep deprivation that's happening. We can tell from our public safety officials and law enforcement about drowsy driving. And we have students that are traveling from Alberg and Grand Isle to South Hero and other places to get here for a time. They do not wake up at 7:59 and get here at 8:00. They're transported. Plus, we have transportation right now where we're picking up our high schoolers at 6:39, 6:40, 6:45, so that they can begin school at 8:00. A lot of issues there. But we know that the brain science is telling us that we need later start times. In all the recommendations right now, this is the earliest of the late starting times. I mean, a lot of schools have moved to 9:00, 9:05, 9:15 for high school. We have South Burlington High School, which is, I believe, at 8:40 right now for the majority of the day. So we also are not looking to be avant-garde and the first ones in Chittenden County to do much of this. So this is just a matter of taking some other really good ideas and seeing how they fit for us. Finally, what if we had collaborative time? And this is really about how you move a school district forward. And Beth, will you talk about this?
Sure. One of the largest ideas for school improvement is team time for teachers and allowing teachers to drive what that professional development is and working together on aligning curriculum and writing units together and having all third-grade teachers working together and looking at instruction and improving their own practice. We do this in the law practice. They do it as medical students and doctors. They're doing rounds. In teaching, it, you kind of just shut the door and you do your thing. Well, we can't do that anymore. We have to improve together for our kids, and, and allowing some collaborative time is the best way to do that. It will be, and on March 20th, there'll be more about this collaborative time and what we're looking at. It's really going to be driven by teachers in a tight schedule, but that loose part is, what do the fourth-grade teachers need to work on? What do the science teachers, seven through 12, need to help to improve themselves? What do they get from looking at student data? What's telling them they need to do by looking at kids' work? But we'll go into deep into, because I could go on until midnight, if you'd like me to, about collaborative time. But we will focus on that on March 20th. But part of this schedule is thinking about that. On Monday, for those teachers that are here, on Monday during the in-service, you'll have time to react to this and see if you had two hours once a week, once a month, you were scheduled to be with each other across the district, how would you use that time? What could you benefit from? So we're going to gather that feedback. We, as administrators and the leadership team, find that time pretty exciting and we could eat it up. But we want it to come and be driven from teachers.
So what if, and again, if we work on these three big ideas, we try to line this up, we try to make it developmentally responsive to the grade levels, and we come up with a series of new time start and stop. So you can see that right now, we're looking at start times are based upon grade level. The younger you are, the earlier it is. I mean, I know, as I raised my four kids, I never had a problem getting my seven-year-old out of bed. By the time they're 17, I usually need, like, explosives to get him out of bed. So, you know, we have things right now where we're sort of the opposite, where our middle school is starting at 7:30 and our elementary school is starting at 8:25. So this just works on that concept. And you can see that it, because it's so symmetrical and lined up, it's just make-believe right now. It's just a draft. It's just is, it's sort of in that perfect world, what if? But this would get our youngest learners at the earliest dismissal time, the oldest learners would have the latest start time, and our durations would match up. But how do we build in that collaborative time? Again, we take a page from people that are already doing it across Chittenden County and across the country in which you embed recurring collaborative time every single week. Right now, we work on a basis where we have three half-days. So we stitch together a learning opportunity that has about 18 weeks separation between each one, and then we try to bring it together. I mean, you couldn't learn, none of us could learn that way. That kind of repetition is just, it's too infrequent, and it just is sort of an up and down kind of, let's begin all over again. With a recurring basis, you can begin to build off of your last moment and you can continue to go to new space. What we're doing is practicing, or we're taking a page out of the idea of saying, let's take our youngest learners and have an early dismissal, not a half-day, but let's peel that back an hour. That gives us so that within that timeframe of that day, we can have a little less instruction time and have a longer day on the instructor's side, and we can get at least a 90-minute block where people can cross over. We, this also builds in actually some transportation time in between some of our buildings.
Can I just speak to that as the parents in the audience? And we're working with, we've met with the Y and the EJ Parks and Rec to figure out, and how can we support families in that, and what could we offer during that hour or even longer, if parents need that as they use after-school program now? But we're working with our communities and people that serve the daycares and our students in our schools about how do we help families in that time? So it's not everybody leaving at 2:00. Probably many of people could go pick up their children now, too. We have a lot of parents that pick up their students now. So that's, that's what we're discussing with community, our community partners.
Yeah, we may be charting new time where we're actually creating a difference between student day and time in school.
Right.
So there may be, let me just run through, and then we'll have Martha run through the questions. And then we have a late arrival on Wednesdays for the high school grade levels. So this brings us back. This is the regular recurring day that isn't the special early dismissal or the late arrival. And again, what we have is, if we take a look at saying, here's the current and a side-by-side comparison, you can see it, like Essex Elementary, it's a 30-minute increase to the duration of the day. Though that's a really big change, it actually brings it more in line with the other K3s. The two, the grade levels between three through five end up having, from a six-hour and 35-minute day, ends up going to a seven, but again, kind of matches up developmentally, at least somewhat with the, with the Fleming population. Westford, Westford actually poses some, you'll see in a second, like, some further mental exercises of what we want to do there. Middle school is there. So it aligns and goes back and forth, and you can see that we're trying to extend a number of days actually to get up to a standard, not, not decline. And we did leave the high school, because the high school is one that we heard a number of places, but there just isn't really solid research right now that's showing that the length of day at high school has a really serious impact to it, because the structure of the high school was so much fundamentally different with some of the PLPs and some of the learning. But we're open to, to learning more. So then, what I wanted to also specify is that we're, we're in communities where we're really used to change. Like, right now, if you're in this current one, if you're in the town and you go all the way through the system, your K through second grader starts school at 8:25. But then, when they go through three through five, it goes to 8:35. But then, when they go to six through eight, it goes back down to 7:30. But when they get into ninth grade, it goes to 8:00. So, I mean, we haven't had, there hasn't been that moment where people are like, we've never had differences. It's actually, we just experienced them. We're like, oh, wait a minute, next year we go to middle school, who's waking up early to make lunches? Or what are we doing with work? Or who's going to pick them up early? They used to get out at 3:10. Can you be home at 2:30 when they get home? So we've been accommodating some of this. I've lived in both communities, so I've, I've been accommodating it as well. But we've had that inconsistency or that change over time. And then, you know, again, this looks so beautifully aligned, 7:45, 8:00, 8:15, 8:30. You know, it just looks like, you know, such, so nice that it's impossible for it to ever be this, because there's going to be little tweaks and touches that are going to happen. So the open questions that are honestly, this is the straw proposal kind of thing. Like, you got to put something on the table to react to, because when we talked about this in August and September and October, and we said, school start and stop times, we're going to be talking about those, those are going to be talked about. You know, everyone, everyone, yeah, and so, but once something goes on the table, people are saying, hey, they're talking about these. I need to really weigh in, because these could impact what's happening and how I work and how my kids work. So what is the right duration of the school day? Really super interesting, and we're diving pretty deep into that. And it depends whether you're looking, right now, the average school day across the country for all states, all districts, is not seven hours. It's more in the range of about six hours and 40 minutes. Average start time across the country for high school, it's not 8:30, it's not 9:00. nine o'clock, it's eight oh three. So, I mean, like, where do we want to fall? Where do we want to secure some of our ground? What's our first step versus our end results? Those are all things that we have to figure out. In a K eight, can you have different starts, ends, and durations for different grade levels? I mean, because you're in a K eight, should your middle school start when your elementary does? Or, could we figure out a way in which you treat it differently? Because the research tells you, there's a disadvantage to those students for not treating it differently. What are the right days for collaboration at work? We pick somebody else's. But is it all the same day? Is it, you know, why is it, why is it Tuesdays and Wednesdays? Why isn't it Mondays and Fridays? Why isn't all Fridays? These are things that we still want to discuss, partly by saying, well, how are we going to leverage it? What's going to be the best way to leverage it? Because then we can go back in and change the day. Should collaborative work and learning be synchronized across all grade levels? Should we have it so that everyone has a dismissal on the same day? Should it be just grade levels? Should it be, every single day of the week, it should be different? And no, that's not one of the options. I looked at some schedule, I couldn't even figure out some schedule today that I looked at in Colorado. But these are just the beginning of the ones that we thought of, and we know there's challenges, there's huge challenges to changing something. I think that we're better practiced in change than we think we are, because we've experienced change each as our kids have gone through different schools, and we've had to figure out new routes to avoid traffic or trains, or how to get around something. But we know there's going to be childcare and traffic impacts, and we've got impacts on school, school meals and lunches. All of this puts our Center for Technology at yet another conundrum to figure out more schedule changes with its thirteen sending schools. And the one that seems to be a very popular concern, and it, and it's rightfully so, because we couldn't figure it out this year for, with drivers, is transportation. One of the things that we've said from the very beginning as we've done this, is that we're going to establish an aligned, research-based, school schedule that maximizes learning, and then we're going to design a transportation system to support it. We can't design our school around our transportation, that it just is, it's the penny wise, pound foolish basis. If we're seeing Daniel Pink right now in his latest book with Wen, is talking about the number one thing you can do for improving the outcomes and achievement in the middle school and high school, is change your start time. He doesn't say, spend a million dollars more on X. He doesn't say that you have to reinvent your personnel, he's just, change the time you start. So, we know, we, we have to have the school bus be the tail. Less than forty-five percent of our population rides the bus. That's universal. So, we are letting that forty-five, we're designing a system around that forty-five, when we could better accommodate that forty-five to not be disadvantaged.
Brian, can you clarify what you just said?
Yep.
Forty percent. So, that's not including, that's in the town, forty percent.
That's, that's the ones that, yeah. So, we're, and that's not different from most school districts.
Right.
And it, and it's forty-five, because it's a higher percentage of kids that are riding it in the earlier ages and less in the older ages. So, forty-five ends up becoming the average. But that is an average that is certainly all throughout Chittenden County, and national averages are around that same way. It depends a little bit on how schools require transportation or make it optional.
I just wanted to clarify that, because
Yep.
The Junction doesn't have the transportation, I don't want people to go and assume, oh, because the-
There's less than forty-five percent jumping onto buses.
Fifty-five percent live in the EJ, they don't have buses, yeah.
So, we're going to post this, so that this gets up. There's also a spreadsheet that a number of people have traveled to that I've been trying to, it was originally sort of almost like the back of a napkin, and I've been trying to support it so people have some context to it, but I think this will also help. It may be something that we could talk to the Essex reporter about, and also really uncovering and directing people to some of the research that we're using to support this. So, that's, that's an update on start and stop times.
Questions, comments from board members? I'll get to the hot things, I don't know, just give the board members a chance first. This isn't our first time here. That's Patrick.
Yeah. No, definitely not the first time. I expressed my concerns last time about this, and I just want to sort of reiterate them again, that while I actually completely agree with the school start times for the older kids, and I think that that's great, I do think that there is a big difference between knowing multiple years in advance that your child going into fourth grade is going to require a twenty-five-minute start time schedule, versus a parent needing to figure it out every Tuesday, which means, you know, you're, you know, effectively making that schedule change something that they have to deal with on a weekly basis. It's not something that you figure out once and then you're okay for the next two years. I appreciate that you're getting in touch with the after-school programs. Remembering, though, that EJR P, the Village Kids, is only fifty-nine kids, and there are hundreds just in Essex Junction alone. And I would say that most of them are individuals like myself, who, I think that if you're a family who can afford to have one stay-at-home parent, this is not a concern for you. You just show up an hour earlier than you usually do. I think that if you are able to afford childcare on a very regular basis, paying for an extra twenty dollars an hour every week is probably not really a big deal for you. But I think that there are a tremendous number of people where that is a big deal, where eighty dollars a month going towards a babysitter is going to prove to be overwhelming. I'm wondering, while I realize we're kind of at the start of this conversation, how deeply are we looking at the equity involved in a decision like that? Because it seems like, that particular portion of it, the early release for the collaborative days, is the one that I think sort of gets me a little bit, because it's, it's, it seems like there is a greater financial burden on those who can least afford it, and equity is the biggest conversation that we've had the entire time that we've been aboard. So...
So, I would like to address that, because maybe I misspoke when I talked about it, but we have been working, especially when we talked to the Y, and I know, Brian, I wasn't in the conversation with Parks and Rec in Essex Junction, but when we talked to the Y, we did talk about what could we do so parents wouldn't have to pay. There's possibility right now, they pay for the space, it doesn't, it's not a huge amount, but it might cover now for that hour. I know that's what they've done and worked out in Williston schools. They offer free for that hour, so that students can stay that extra time.
Is that accessible, then, for all kids? Because I know that EJR P-
If we did it, it would have to be. It would have to be. Yeah, I wouldn't prevent, yeah, it would have to be. But there's also other possibilities. I have been brainstorming with other administrators, so how do we do that? Could we use staff that we have that maybe not, wouldn't be in that collaborative time? With, I'm going to just use the word classroom teachers, and I don't mean that, because there's a lot of other people that need to be in those collaborative meetings, but if classroom teachers are there, who else can support? And maybe they're supporting while the others are getting professional development. So, we have to just work that out. I know we're dedicated to working it out and dedicated to working to improve our system to give teachers and professionals that time that's needed to do that. Our leadership team, I can tell you, is extremely creative in thinking about it. We started to have conversations, not started, we have been having conversations. We've had two cancellations of leadership team meetings, so. But, so the other day, we were, we're talking about challenges and solutions, and I can tell you, they came up with some pretty creative, awesome, no-cost solutions. We just, we need to morph them to a little more.
Okay. Marla, and then Liz.
I remember a few years ago, the Essex Junction Prudential Committee, Tom Bocinski over at Hiawatha, did something really unique for Hiawatha students utilizing UVM. And I think the other schools weren't able to utilize that, so I think it went by the wayside, because we wanted it available for all schools. But it was interesting how Tom found creative ways to use exercise, or they were doing exercise in the morning while there were team meetings going on, and it wasn't costing the district any money. So, I know from past experience watching one school, I think it's very doable, and I think there's ways to find the way that it's going to work. So, I applaud what you're doing. The other thing is, my question is about the contracts that we just settled. Do I, did I remember that we settled the contracts with the goal of teachers being there for seven hours, and it's common among finally all the teachers now, seven-hour workday?
It is the same amount throughout the schools, yes.
Which before that, it was not common.
It was different, correct.
So, that is one thing I'm really proud of, Kim and the negoti-, it took them a year, year and a half, but they really worked hard at it. And I thought I remembered that.
I actually pulled up the contract as soon as I was looking at the time, simply because it's fresh in my mind, and I wanted to just look to see what the space was around the seven-hour school day within the contract, and I knew we were bringing the high school into the alignment at seven and a half workday hours, and that begins effective July one of this coming. I didn't doubt that they had already looked at it, I just needed to gratify my own curiosity as I sat here.
Listen.
I just wanted to respond to what Pat said about the pressure on Village Kids, and just make it clear that Village Kids and the Y, that Beth mentioned, Brian and the administration will also be talking at Essex Town, Parks and Rec, and CHIPS, and reaching out to community partners, so, just so we know. It's not just EJR P that, that we're going to be rushing into, and it's, it's a very thoughtful process that's underway to talk to the community partners and see what can be done about this.
One of the things, and I know you all are still working on the details, but one of the things that jumped at me somewhat quickly in thinking about the students that often staff the rec programs, the high school kids, and thinking about the late start for high school kids, as opposed to aligning and early release, which might create the resources to help staff.
Yeah, we talked about that.
And I'm sure you guys have already
Yeah.
Thought about those ideas, but that was one that popped for me right away.
Yeah.
And thinking about challenges. And there's high schools that do that, and then I always think about kids with sports or after-school activities, but there are high school, our children went to a high school that had early release, and kids went off campus and came back or hung out in the library.
Right.
So, that is definitely a possibility, and we have thrown that idea around a lot. I also, to speak to you, reminded me of the conversation that we had about a lot of high school students as babysitters or childcare providers.
And even employees at the Park and Recs and volunteers.
Yes, yes, exactly. So, we have adjusted the high school, originally when it came out, and we were thinking is that's seven-hour, let's make them all seven-hour, and that was the first one that was put out, and that was the high school going to three-thirty, and I kept scratching my head, like, I just, I couldn't see or feel good about that one. We did move it up, but now I'm wondering if the elementary school needs to be moved to match that, not necessarily that that fifteen minutes is with classroom teachers. I mean, kids wait for buses sometimes for twenty minutes in snow suits or half hour or-
Not under Brian's new system, that's not-
Yeah, so-
Not happening.
Right, so what could be-
We'll let you know when we decide it's not, this is opposed to yours.
So, what could we do with that fifteen minutes? And that's something that we have to play around with.
Other questions from board members? Keala?
I guess, if we're talking about things where we're bringing in community partners to offer something that would be free to any student that wants to participate in it, how is that different from simply saying that school is still happening, but there's an assembly? Like, I, I mean, what parent is going to come one day a week to take their child away from a free activity with all of their friends in a safe school setting?
But it's working with partners to do that, so we can free up the professionals to have
I just don't understand-
Professional learning collaborative.
It doesn't sound like an early release. It sounds like something that's different from the usual school day for forty-five minutes.
We don't call that the end.
It's a continued evolution and adaption of, that's what some school districts, we're taking a page out of some school districts, but seeing how it really fits here. And we've heard a lot of strong supporters saying that even though it's consistent and it's regular, it's difficult to plan around. So, we've begun to then look at solutions that, you know, maybe we find that others have looked at and they haven't been able to succeed in. I, I think that we, there is going to be nothing that is going to present itself as a solution to the problems of our change, until we begin to look at them. You know, no one's going to come up with an option for kids to participate in when all the kids are in school. You know, there's very few midday after-school programs during the school day. You know, it's just, so we need to almost create the need in order for people to have the imagination of how do we fit it? And that's hopefully what this process is doing.
Patrick?
Ask this one actually on behalf of someone who asked it on Facebook. There was a question about whether or not the collaboration days would be taking the place of the professional development half-days. So, would we continue to have both, or would the collaboration days effectively take up that time?
We will not have the half-days.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Any comments from the audience? Yes.
Hi, Lisa Ajay. First, I just want to say thank you for introducing it the way you did, it made it a little less prickly, knowing this isn't starting next week. I think my, I have a ton of questions, ton of concerns over this, as I'm sure most people do. Is there going to be a forum? Because I love the notion of having to raise our hand every time we question, way too many questions. Is there going to be another forum or a meeting, or is there going to be some way that we can actually address most of our concerns and questions, even though we're just starting, before you guys really get the ball rolling on this?
We, we could arrange a community forum, or I would rather have it community conversations, instead of us talking at the conversation.
Right.
I think of a forum, like, it's just-
I know, I apologize.
So, but yes, conversations around it?
Yep. Sure.
Sounds good. Yes?
I, I just think that what Lisa said pretty-
Could you-
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Lindsay Wignall. My kids go to the schools in the town. I also work at the elementary school. So, I have a lot of concerns, like Lisa said. And I appreciate, I also appreciate the way you presented it, and I appreciate the way you put transportation in bold letters. It just made me remember a conversation we had when the transportation problem arose a few years ago, when the high school start times did shift, and it caused, and at that meeting, everybody said, we understand that, that, that this is because of a shift of start times, but we can't do anything about that, so we have to make the transportation, we just have to deal with it, because we can't align the start times. So, I feel like now a new conversation is happening where you're saying, we're going to align the start times and we're going to fit transportation in. So, I just feel like I sat at two of these board meetings with conflicting messages, and it's our small kids and now our big kids that are affected by this, and it's just, it's so hard as a parent to think, like, it sounds, seems like only forty-five percent is affected, but the forty-five percent of us that it does affect, it really affects in their whole day. You know, my kids have anxiety about how long they're going to wait, and who's going to be there when they get home? Is it going to be a babysitter or a big brother? And so, now this means a lot of things are going to change, like, it's not going to be an older sibling or a babysitter, because they're going to get home after you. And, so we, I think that transportation piece is huge, but I just feel like the messages were just very conflicted from the door.
Can I, yeah, if I can offer, I actually think I was not even necessarily on the town board at that time, I might have been, but when they switched the high school time, we were separate districts.
Right.
And we truly were not part of the conversation. The times changed, and we were not, we needed to react to them, and we need to have two different start times. At the time, in Essex Town, K eight, because we had half the kids riding, half the buses at two different times, and we had to. And that, there was the more recent switch in time that was around the advisory that used to be at the end of the day, and then now it's in the middle of the day, so that changed, and that was in the last few years, and that made it really tight on our turnaround to get to the elementary and founders. But again, at that time, we were in a reactive space. I add it to the list of benefits of us being- I add it to the list of benefits of us being a pre-K twelve district to think really thoughtfully about design in the way Brian described it and what's best for kids. And then build the transportation around it. It doesn't mean just having from experience and having dealt with busing. Part of that stagger has that beautiful picture. It's not gonna be able to be that beautiful picture because we can't, it's not gonna be that precise because we can't get from place to place and be as efficient with busing as we would need to be. But the concepts, I think, are all in the right place and they're all in the right mind of thinking. And the round that happened many years ago when the high school went to eight o'clock from seven thirty, that was really overwhelming. The more recent, and that I was just a parent finding it overwhelming. The stuff that happened, I think, most recently, just moving the advisory at the times of the day, was something we just really had to respond to. And it was not big enough to change, blow everything up. But it required, I think, the second round of buses waiting longer. And we don't have to do that now. We get to fix it as a pre-K twelve system.
So that, you have that transportation involved, that thought process that you fix the broken transportation system?
Our hope is to design the most efficient system possible. We'll see, yes.
I have a child who'll be in the middle school and two who will be in the high school next year. I, I'm, and I'm an educator in a different district who does, we have a monthly late start, K to twelve. So my concern as a parent, I do like the late start. I have some concerns about the older kids coming home later than the younger kids. But it sounds like you guys are kind of thinking through that. The, I'm, as a parent, super concerned about having Tuesday, Wednesday shifts. For, for me, it affects me two days every week. And, and that's huge. That's, that affects my, my work time, both in the morning and in the afternoon, every week. Despite having stuff going on at the schools for some kids. So as, as an educator who has to leave for meetings when my kids are home, I have to get somebody currently in to come and take care of them. That's been a challenge to put somebody on the bus. So I like that you guys are talking about it. I would personally like to see, I think, I think Beth you had already said that there's this consideration of having it all in one day, K twelve, where they're all kind of affected at the same time. I think that's less of a burden parentally. I think weekly is a lot. I had a question about the ninety minutes. And that, only because when I looked at it, I thought, the kids are leaving forty-five minutes early. How does, how do educators get ninety minutes? My district, we get two hours monthly. It's a hu- I mean, that is huge for us. I'm not saying in all that I see that as a negative. I was surprised at the ninety minutes because I was like, forty-five minutes, what does that give anybody? You know, I get time to do paperwork a little bit if I have forty-five minutes free in my day. And so ninety minutes, I'm curious about.
So we're looking at it when we pare back each one of the starts, well, each one of the ends was pared back forty-five minutes. And what we were using was depending upon the start day, as we said in the negotiated contract, we have seven and a half hours of contracted labor time. So if we peel back forty-five minutes and we have a hard stop at four o'clock, then some schools peel back and end up having two hours. But the least amount was ninety minutes. And we figured that if you transport it, and you know, again, it's one of those things is that we know ninety minutes has a kind of a special attachment for becoming organized, learning, discussing, and then kind of passing on to next time. So it's like ninety minutes is like one of the minimum amounts of time that you'd wanna be engaging in group learning. So it's just, these are just little tidbits of building blocks.
Yeah, and, and part of that too is our teachers are there on Tuesdays for a faculty meeting. So some of that, I, we talked as a leadership team about really looking at those faculty meetings and how do we make them more about professional learning? How can we get the best out of those meetings? We don't all wanna sit in a meeting all the time. So, and, and using that time too. So their contract, what we've proposed aligns with their contract in the time that they're here. And the once a week would do that. So some of those Tuesdays would be for faculty meetings. Some would be for school professional learning communities based as they have now, some of the schools. And then once a month would be the cross district to try to get that alignment. We have had teachers craving to be together across the district as a new district. We have had a lot of, I see some faces like, really? But it's true, we have. I've gotten emails myself, like, can we have time to get together as first grade teachers? So, but, that's what, schedule.
Anybody have a last comment? Last comment.
Okay, I'm certainly gonna send you an email. Okay, I won't do questions. I guess my, my comment would be, aside from the financial burden that has been brought up, my husband and I, and I think a lot of people twists our schedule upside down, backwards. We'll go off the camera. To really try and be there for our kids, there is a whole lot of mom guilt gone on. And to have to leave your child somewhere when you work really, really hard not to is frustrating if we're gonna come across that. It's even more frustrating when you work a lot more than seven and a half hours. I'm sorry, and this is going to teachers who I love and we can't do anything without them. But this is a lot of stress on families to give some time to the teachers. And I just, it's, I think there needs to be a lot of discussion around it. And I think we really need to involve parents as much as we can because it's, it's a lot. And it's, the mom guilt's already starting. My head's already trying to figure out how this is gonna work. And it's, it's stressful.
And I sympathize with that mom guilt because I was a full-time working mom. Did the same thing and adjusted the schedule. And my husband was a school administrator. And we, there were times when it was, it was very stressful when they were little. And I totally sympathize that with that. And we are trying to figure that out and help families. And also, I also knew as a mom, I had that responsibility too. Yes, I wanted to be home. And just as a statement for teachers, we're asking them, they know they're in school for the seven and a half hours. That is not to say what we don't, we, I consider myself a teacher when I get talking about it. But the night work and the weekend's work to prepare. So it's longer than a seven and a half. That's what their contract requires them to be with us.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'm very conscious of the time. But Patrick and then Brian.
I mean, just directly, I mean, there are parents on this board as well. I have the same thoughts and concerns. My daughter is in the second grade. She's gonna be in the system for a very long time to come. I can't say much except that there are parents who are going to be taking those considerations because I have them. They're very real and they will affect me. She's in this district, obviously. So I don't think that, the same worries you have are the same worries that we have up here. And we're going to think this process through.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say that there's so many sides to this cube as we try to solve it. And I am trying to put all of them into play so that we can at least look at it for a little while as all the complexity, but also all the possibility. At some point, we're gonna have to come down to priorities because they, they can't all be mutually solved together. So we're gonna have to decide like, what's most important? Is it that we have the same duration for all kindergarten, for all first grade, for all second grade? Do we feel that that's most important? Or do we feel that this is, or this, or this? And each one of them has a chance to really make your life better. And each one of those has a definite chance to make it more complicated. And, and that will be the process. Because as we react, we react to one person's like, this would be awesome, which is another person's like, please do not do that to me. So, you know, and, and really where I've tried to come down to as a non educator in the district is to say, how are we going to make this? And we should make it research-based and we should make it out of our educational leaders who say, this is how we maximize learning. And then we've gotta do a little bit of the juggling around that. Because otherwise, we're asking our educators to work on the optimal software determination of our transportation network. And it really just shouldn't be about that for our educators.
So I'm gonna encourage you, if you have specific questions, to email Beth and Brian. I think they're, they're working as a team on this. And so I think sending an email to both of them would be helpful. I think the sooner the questions are out there, the better. I think we also will work on planning a community engagement so that there is time for folks to talk about it. Brian and Beth, superintendent and chief of pretty fast.
Or you thought was really insightful, you send that to me.
They'll go right back to him.
Okay, yes.
So I'm Dave, I don't have a dog in the hunt as far as the child because they're all grown. But I am very the superintendent. That principal's always gone somewhere else. One of the things that we were successful at in building-based professional learning, we talked about district-wide, we were able to use our internal schedule within our school. When I was at seven hundred fifty student K through pre-K grade school, we had to do a lot of the same teaming. We went back and took a look at our own internal schedule within the school and rearranged, allied our schedules, lunch schedules, some of those downtime breaks along the line of how the children learn best, to keep them in a class, et cetera, et cetera. And we were able to steal blocks of times where kids could come, could come in, do all kinds of things, but allow time for the internal teaming. So I've heard about, you know, what happens above and beyond. I would encourage you to look at your daily schedules within your school to see if there's ways that that could be redesigned and take advantage of professional learning time within that schedule.
I just want to say that this is so great that people are in the audience. We've been working together as a board now for almost going on to the second year. And, and it feels like you're working in a vacuum. So I really wanna thank everybody for turning out. And I also wanna ask you a big favor is please spread the word with all the parents. I'm not gonna make annual meeting this year. I'm not gonna make it. And there are going to be votes and things talked about at the annual meeting. And last year, very few parents turned out. And we were listening to a lot more of the retired and the people in the community that didn't have children. And so I have the feeling you're gonna leave before our next agenda item. So I wanna just say, please show up Monday, April ninth at seven o'clock at the high school. And don't forget to go vote the next day. Please.
Thanks. Okay, I'm gonna move on and I will do that what Martha said. Thank you for coming. We appreciate it. All right, our next amendment is to approve the annual meeting warning. It was sent to you in the packet. Did anybody find any mistakes? I've read it a couple times, I think it's good.
Everybody looks it.
I know.
We don't even have to read it.
So we have, we have talked about this before. We did approve articles six, seven, and eight, which are the budget articles at our last meeting. So I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this, Keely.
I wanted to know if there was an update on how we are making sure that people can stand for election to the school board.
So there was a mistake made in drafting legislation that we asked for last year. There was a section of law that conflicted with the new law that was passed and was deemed to be prevailed. So Tylan is Gian Batista, our rep, is working with Ledge Council to try to get it fixed. But for this year, the towns are warning the election of the school board members. And so there will be, they may be able to get it on the same ballot, but it will be warned by the town as opposed to by the school district.
And are all three of those municipal organizations aware of and able to do it in time?
That's my understanding. Kim?
That was exactly my question. And I guess more than an understanding, I would love like an email confirmation that those boards have time to meet and approve a warning.
I know, Westford has it on their agenda tonight. So I've been communicating with the Essex Town clerk. And I believe Paul has been communicating with the clerk in the town.
Okay, because there, our window, I don't remember what our window is.
It's, it's pretty close to over.
Coming up on being over and I'm just worried about that. The other thing, so that, that's concerning. The other thing that I was wondering, and I know we're not trying to alter this right now, but because we aren't warning that vote, does that mean we cannot even mention that that is also a vote taking place, I guess?
In this morning?
Yeah.
No.
They said we can't, like, when it says to go to the polls and vote for this other article, we can't.
That's not our jurisdiction. Okay, are we getting a motion? I'm entering a motion that we approve the meeting for, the warning for the school district annual meeting as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Andre. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposing aye. So how many copies do we have to sign?
I have three here.
Okay, so I'm gonna pass them around for signature. Al and Brendan couldn't be here tonight. Al asked if he could sign it next week. I think I was right when I said no. I think it has to be signed tomorrow.
Yes.
I suppose I could email Brendan and ask him, tell him, he could sign it if he stopped by.
There's, on a very pure legal basis, it is your vote that approves that warning.
The signatures.
It is not your signatures.
Oh, okay.
I think the signatures are important. We normally do it. But if we post that in the Burlington Free Press, they do not post the signatures. They only post the warning.
Okay. So, so you think Al and Brendan could-
If we could get it done before publishing in, say, the annual report or other places in which we display it, I think it shows a solidarity and, and some information.
As soon as possible.
Couldn't we have these at the East office?
Yes.
East office.
Yeah, because then their workbench is-
Okay, all right. So did we vote? Did we vote?
On the warning?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good. I thought you did.
Yeah, everybody approved it. Andre did.
Yeah, I know you made the motion.
I didn't, have you called the question? I didn't think you called the question.
No.
All right, so we haven't voted.
Warning for the school district annual meeting as presented.
Right.
We moved, we moved.
I don't-
Did not vote yet.
We did vote, everyone approved it.
Yeah, we said zero.
Okay.
Can we finish on the policies too? But Martha, I'm back to thinking back to an earlier vote.
The resolution on the gun-related violence, we had a motion on the table that Andre approved. And then Kim added a couple pieces onto it. We voted on what Kim added. I don't remember us voting on Andre's original.
Okay, that's a, that's a good point. So we'll, we'll correct that. All right, so let's vote. We decide we don't need to vote. We already voted on the warning, right?
Right.
Okay, so I'm gonna sign it and pass it around. You, there are three copies to sign. All right, let's, to make sure we do it right, let's go back to the gun resolution. And let's vote on the amended motion from Andre, which added the two bills that we already recommended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing aye. Great, thank you. All right, policies, first reading. Who is going to lead us on?
Okay, so you've got those policies, Brian.
Which one are we doing first?
A twenty-two is first.
Eight twenty-two? So.
Non-discrimination.
Non-discrimination. So I'm looking for my paper copy. Okay, so. Um, it's pretty straightforward. Um, I didn't see any typos or anything in it when I read it online and when it was sent out to us. Um, is there any questions about it from the board?
Hi.
Yeah.
I had a question on.
Uh, let's see. Uh, the last paragraph before, the second page before the grievance procedure, we use the word extending equal educational opportunity and extension of equal opportunity employment. And then we talk about equitable, fair and equitable. So because we've been having those conversations, the equity versus equal, I'm just curious why or how the, or what the difference or what the actual meaning of that paragraph is with everything we've discussed.
Well, it has to do with the equitable of this policy and people for the non, notice of non-discrimination, not like equitable in everything. You know what I mean? It's not, um.
So.
Making sure that we serve all students.
Okay, but if we use the word, "School board policies and actions or procedures of the administration will be directed toward extending equal educational opportunity for all students." We've been discussing a lot during the year that equal education isn't always equitable. So I'm not quite sure I'm comfortable with the language in this paragraph with everything we've been discussing this year.
Well, e- equal educational opportunity is the language used in Act sixty, Act sixty-eight. That's the language that is in state law about what school districts have to do. Um, equal educational opportunity has not been interpreted to mean the same. So I, I hear you, Martha. I just think in this context, I wouldn't, I wouldn't see that we needed to change what probably comes from state law.
Well, yeah, I would assume that since this, this, we did not change this policy in committee. Um, it, it's basically how it was written by V S B A. And yes, I would interpret it as Martha does, that it, it's, uh, the fair and equitable of the first paragraph of the policy, dealing with all the, all the possible bases of being discriminated against. So it's not really our being non-discriminatory toward educational purposes. It's more of discriminating against religion, creed, race, color, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. In other words, it says we're going, we're going to go by state law. Is my interpretation. The fair and equitable that we're dealing with, with our educational pieces is above and beyond us.
Keely.
I think Kim was performing, but.
Oh, that's, um, so I have a couple of thoughts and questions. Why did, if you guys can help frame the conversation, why did this batch come forward? Why is this a recommended policy that we're adding to the docket at a time where we don't have a policy yet on equity, but we do have a policy on hazing harassment and bullying for students and harassment for employees? And just more broadly, this and the others that were brought forward, why are these coming forward?
So we went through, Paul and I went through, and Deb Anderson also had a say in it, went through the, um, recommended policies by the V S B A. And then thought about times that they've been in the district where they've needed a policy around. There's a lot that we're not.
Like we have grievance procedures and contracts. We've got policies on hazing harassment and bullying that are specific to identified and protected classes. So I'm trying to figure out where this fits.
Hazing and harassment, it's different than discrimination.
Right.
Very.
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
In their experience, they really felt it was necessary. And I also relied on this policy in the past S U. Um, and I agreed with them that it is one, that's a good one to have as a policy, to rely on.
It just feels procedural and law to me as opposed to something. And potentially, we've got grievance procedures and contracts.
Mm-hmm.
And we've got very clear procedures on harassment in those policies. So I just didn't know if this is getting out ahead of or in lieu of a policy on equity, which I would hope it wouldn't be because I would imagine.
No, it's different. No, it's not, it's not an equi, this isn't, this is about equal opportunities more than an equity, where we think about equity and all the work that we've done around it. Equity will be a different policy than this.
So, um, just to respond to both things that have come up from the perspective of having been involved in the conversation, um, when it comes to the wording of equal opportunity, I think of it as like the E E O C, where the things that exist in law usually refer to equal opportunity, even though we might be more interested in outcomes, we might be more interested in equity than equality. Um, the language of the law is set up to discuss equal opportunity. Um, and to Kim's question, a lot of the required policies that we dealt with last year are basically, um, a restatement of things that are in the Vermont state laws um, in a way that makes it more easily accessible to our community. Um, and I think a lot of the recommended policies likewise are just telling people stuff that we, we have to do anyway because it's the law. Um, but because it's in our policy book, we're making it really obvious that it's relevant to our community, these things that are in the law. That's just my perspective on.
Well said.
How we discuss the difference between law, policy, procedure, stuff like that.
Any other questions or comments on A twenty-two?
I think it's procedure, but I, I would just ask that somewhere, if we're making these readily accessible in terms of referencing the law, it says we've got a designated person.
Yep.
Like that should be somewhere maybe with it.
Yep.
That person can change, but, um, it wouldn't be all that helpful if we don't know where, people don't know where to go from that.
Yep.
The, the, uh, Kim, the answer of your concern, the committee is, um, waiting for, for Beth and her crew to write the procedures that go with these policies. Um, it's, we're going to get the policies out of the way and Beth, giving Beth time to flesh in the skeleton that we need. You, you'll see the, this fleshed and skeleton later when, when she's gotten done.
Okay.
Yes, yes, Beth, you are going to do that.
Can we move on to A thirty-two?
Okay, so, um, this one, when I read it online, looked just like the one we got in paper. Um, hit two is verbatim from our recommended V S B A.
Uh, no, we changed.
That we changed? We changed one thing, okay.
From the V S B A or whatever the language we're given.
Oh, that's right, we did, we did. We, we corrected, um, there, there's going to be a correction dealing with special education students.
That, that was, the most recent version we've received did reflect.
Reflect that.
The change that we made in the committee.
This one.
Right.
Is that something, is it material? Is it something we need to understand? I'm not sure what you're saying.
We are trying to, um, not discriminate against special education students, that we are going for all students. So you will not, the V S B A copy has, um, and visits from the news media talks about specifically talking about special education students being required. And we asked it to be all students.
Yep.
Thanks. That, I understand that. Kim?
This one falls under the category of policies to consider. So I just, I, I'm going to keep asking this question because it feels like we are getting down a path of a lot of policies that we aren't necessarily intending to monitor, that are covered in the releases parents sign when they, um, like they're in the student handbook or the parent handbook. They are, um, we ask parents if they're signing releases for pictures of their students. We, I'm just trying to understand why this is one we're picking. And I'm just going to keep asking that, so thank you for indulging me.
This one has to do with experience also and, um, where the media, we did have that discussion, actually a long discussion about this one, about parents signing off to it, but it really has to do with media. It's the, it's the number four. That's the, the most important one that we felt, um, with media. And the discussion with Paul was too, in the past, with his experience, it's been, um, to, for a principal to rely on a policy is, is helpful in this situation with visits and.
What, what's happened, what's.
Yeah. But then.
I have a question on the media piece on this policy. Um, and those of us that have been around this district for a long time, I remember when we had our, South Burlington had a suicidal issue, had a suicide. Then our district had a suicide when Robert Harrison was the superintendent. And I can remember being on the board that sat there and said, "How come you kept the media out?" He met with the media in a non-school atmosphere. And he had explained that in his past experience that you didn't want to lead to another suicide. And South Burlington had allowed the media in to interview kids and everything. And sure enough, they had a second one. So he said, "You need to stop it." So my fear here is that it talks about the principal or his or de, his or her designee. I, I would, I would like to see it be more the superintendent's decision, especially if it's something like when you have a lockdown going on. I, I just think the media piece and that is important that the superintendent or his or her designee is controlling that. And those are the extreme cases, but they do happen. Because we have ten principals, one might handle it differently than another one.
If we have a policy, that's what stops it. Um, you, right, I mean, I, it's fine, I.
Well, I don't think you want the superintendent.
Gets me involved in a little different situation.
To make every decision about, you know, when the media shows up to film kids who are going to be in a play or something like that.
I probably, the designee would be, I would turn it over to the school principal.
Or the school principal can turn it over to Beth when the school principal doesn't. If there's a situation where they have a field.
Kind of show up in procedures then, couldn't it? Be, if you're working on procedures, so all the principals are on the same page.
I think more of a discussion than a procedure for this. I think this is a pretty clear cut, being in education and having to deal with this kind of, these kinds of issues. Um, I think that, I think it's clear the way it's written. I don't really think it needs a procedure, but I certainly would have conversations with them if that's, um, appropriate when needed.
I mean, I would, it seems to me that if you have a situation like the one you just described, Martha, it's, the, the superintendent is going to be involved anymore. Other questions come in? Okay, let's go to A twenty-one.
Okay, A twenty-one.
Is, uh, it, we.
Public participation at board meetings.
Yes, public participation at board meetings. Um, we did tailor, tailor it down a little bit, so it is, it's, uh, been edited a little bit. Um, but it still has the same meaning as it was. Um, the one thing that does need to be included at some point, probably down in the legal reference, cross-reference piece, is to actually list our policy on complaints, which is not listed at the bottom there. So that should be added. I think that's something we actually discussed at committee. And that did not make it down the references.
Okay. Beth, why don't you answer Kim's question before she asks?
Why do we need this one?
Yeah.
I left that really up to the committee, board committee. I'm. I'm indifferent about this one.
It, it's basically just a, a guide for how, how to operate. Um, you know, it's, it's a matter of do you want this one or not?
Well, it was sort of, it was what Martha did, so if this is.
Right.
If this is important for people to understand, that's, I don't think, I would just read through it again to make sure we did exactly what we said we were going to do. And you did, because Martha's so good at this. So we didn't have to have a policy for it, but in that we do it, whatever it is, it's fine.
But it is how I've always done it.
But it's helpful for.
I think the one, um, the one piece that I keep thinking about is that policy is a, is an easy place for the public to go to see how things are going to work. And so this is one that I think, you know, the public might look at.
And if we were to have meetings that continue to generate interest, I mean, that, we expected obviously more than we have, but we still had more than we've had before. And if it were to be like a transportation meeting I had a couple of years ago in Essex, like to have a, a strict time limit and a list is an important sort of procedure in how the meeting will run and whether it's stated in advance of the meeting or it shows up in policy, because people pour through our policies for their guidance, then either way, I, I'm, I probably wouldn't have asked the question on this one because it was exactly what Martha did. And if this eliminates that, that's fine.
Yeah, and I, I would do that. I thought about that and if there had been a huge number of people, I would have set up a time limit. Okay, you all settled that? All right, let's go to C twenty-five.
All right.
Admission of non-resident student tuition. I haven't got this good. Admission of non-resident tuition students. So the only error that's managed to get out of committee is in sentence, second sentence, where there is a large one after non-resident.
Ooh.
Yes, that was supposed to be removed, um, but it has reappeared.
Can you see it?
Yeah.
Um, I figure it's.
Came from a footnote in the C C S U policy.
Policy, right. So it, it, it needs to hit the erase button.
Yep, got it.
Other, other than that, um.
Just outlines how it has to work.
It outlines how it works.
Questions come in?
Um, one part that I'm bothered by is if, the part about the non-resident student having to be in good standing, et cetera. Um, if our goal is to provide education as much as possible to anyone, residents, non-residents, I'd like that to be addressed because it sounds like it's something that could be automatic. You can't come here without looking at the basis for the student not to be in good standing. But if we're looking, trying to do, and go into the realm of restorative. and go into the realm of restorative justice, et cetera, then I'm bothered by that. Because the question I have is if a resident student who is not paying tuition, but is a resident of the district, they will get educated regardless of whether they're in good standing or not, after their.
Well, not necessarily.
Well.
No, they're gonna be expelled.
Well, if they're expelled, but that means they can come back the following year, or following a ten-day suspension, they come back on the eleventh day.
Only if they can show that they're ready to come back.
Right, but this.
I think that this should be in there. We could have a student expelled from another school.
Yes.
And then not have anything to fall back on as to why we wouldn't admit them. So it needs to be in good standing, so that we don't have students that might have done something at another school and come here to.
Well, I guess the question that I continue to raise is if a student is not in good standing at another school and is in a situation where they're a tuitioning student, then is that automatic dismissal from attending our school?
No, it's not automatic, and I don't think this is saying that, but we can rely on that.
Rely on that to decide whether it should be or not, so will they have the hearing before?
Well, it might not necessarily be a hearing. It would be even a conversation with the family, or looking into the records, or calling the old school, and sometimes another placement is best, and I totally agree with that. Not all schools are made for every single kid. A child might do here, do better here than somewhere else, but if they come with a long history of discipline, is it worth it for us to take that on with other students and putting maybe safety issues in the hands?
I certainly understand.
But then again, maybe it is the right place. So you should, we, I think we need this to rely on, on, in those tricky situations and, and let us have those conversations and make sure that it's the right placement for the student.
But don't you think the policy is pretty clear that you can admit something, but you don't have to?
Well, except that good standing should be demonstrated when the applicant shows that he or she has not been legally dismissed or suspended for more than ten days during the proceeding twelve months. And then the second paragraph speaks to a non-resident who was unable to provide evidence of good standing.
Maybe if.
If, well, I, again, I.
It does say, please don't maybe.
Right, maybe. I, I guess what I'm looking is to see softer language or with regards to not define good standing as all that, because the state of Vermont has different standards for suspensions, and we all know there's varying dispense, uh, suspension standards.
Right, but at the same time, don't you think it's reasonable to let your superintendent make that decision? I can think of lots of situations where other parents would be horrified if you accepted a student that wasn't a resident who had brought a come to school in another district.
And I understand that basis. I mean, it's clear. If it's a ten-day suspension for something that is not of that nature.
Yeah, I think it's clear the superintendent can. Kelly?
I just wanted to say that I think Andre is envisioning a situation, for instance, let's say somebody comes from a state where there's a strong school-to-prison pipeline scenario, where they are experiencing disciplinary consequences for behavior that maybe we would think was completely normal behavior. And they live in a district that doesn't have a high school, then they need to find some district that will take them, and we wanna make the encouragement that the superintendent will consider each case with an open mind.
We do.
And I think that the policy does allow for that.
Yes.
All right.
I have a question under implementation. The tuition on or before January fifteenth of each year? If that date changes, is there a way to word it, on or before January fifteenth? Or what's the education law that sets that date that we have to give that tuition to the state? Is that the?
It is the, that is the law. That's the law.
January fifteenth is the law.
Right, right, but if it changes, why have to go back and change the policy? Can't there be a and/or as set in state?
Or the date is set.
I think it's important to have in there, and then public can look at it and say, oh, they set the tuition already, and then what is it?
No, I mean, keep the date, and/or.
Or to say.
Or, or as designated by whatever agency.
I, this is so unlikely to change. I understand what you're getting at, and I think there are times when you do wanna be general when things are, when it's something that is likely to change. But I think if this ever changed, I think we would go straight to our policy, because tuition is a piece of what we do with the regular pieces.
And it's pretty much been set in stone.
It's been that way. Okay, a long time.
Now, now, one thing that Beth did talk about is that at some point in the discussion is, is that the policies are going to be looked at on a more regular basis than what they've had in the past. So should the law change? We would be looking at this like every two to three years anyhow, so we would be automatically be changing it, so to put your conscious rest, you'll see these a lot more often than you've seen them in the past.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, B twenty-two, public complaints. I'll just say, this is something I rely on all the time.
Me too.
I think it's helpful if it's clear to us and clear to the public.
And it looks pretty clear.
All right.
I guess we, just for context, this originally said about personnel, and we considered that there might be complaints that were about something other than personnel.
Other than personnel.
Right.
And we should still cover it in the policy.
Great. I think that's great.
Nice addition, yeah.
Okay, then I'll entertain a question that we approve policies, A twenty-two, E thirty-two, A twenty-one, C twenty-five, and B twenty-two at first reading. So, thanks. Any further discussion?
I just would have one comment, that the agenda does not correctly reflect the title of E thirty-two, so get that from the board package instead of the agenda, cause it's not of media, it's or media.
Okay.
I already figured that one out.
Kim's on.
All right, I'll lose in favor, say hi.
Hi.
I'll pose a name. Okay, top team updates, communications?
So, let's see, where to start? I'll start, I think, with voices. And one of the things I wanna let you guys know is that Beth and Jamal and Tess and Steve McCourt and I are traveling to Rhode Island next week to give a presentation at the New England Secondary School Consortium, and we're really, I think, I'm really excited about it. I think it's a good way to show the work that we've been doing, and we're excited. The, I wanted to thank Pat for the communication on Facebook. The takeaways have been getting more and more comment on Facebook, and I think Pat's doing a great job managing those, and we are trying to make sure that the voice of that team is, is consistent, so if you see comments on social media that, that you feel you wanna respond to, Pat is doing those as the takeaway author, for his name to be on those, we think is really good and consistent. And anything else, if you wanted to send them to Martha, questions or concerns or comments that come up, take a screenshot of it and send it to her, and then we can figure out how best to respond to comments that way. There was some, Pat, what else do we have? Oh, the, the other thing is that we have just been working on the frequently asked questions and the Q and As for the website around the budget. Ben, there's only about, I think there's four questions right now that have answers to them, and if you all think of questions or community members have questions, we would ask that you email them to us, and then we can get them onto that Q and A document and, and make sure that there's an answer for them. Martha's taking the lead on answering the questions as they come up. But anyone watching and, and any board members, if there are concerns or questions that keep coming up, or come up once that you're seeking an answer for, you can send the email to either Pat or Martha or myself, and we'll make sure it makes it to the document. Yeah, Kelly?
Are there answers that we prepared last year that we could just crib and paste over with a different number on them, because they're the sort of things people ask every year?
Yeah, and that's what Ben is working on. He pulled from last year, and he's updating those, and then any new, uh, uh, specific to this year's budget are, we're collecting. And, and this year's numbers, tax implications, and that kind of thing. Yeah, but Ben is working on taking last year's and turning it in.
And while we're on communications, is a postcard or something going out to all the residents?
Yes, it is. And Ben and Pat and Martha and I got worked on that last week, and he checked with Brian and Beth to make sure that the numbers are all clear, and I believe they're going out tomorrow. No, to the printer tomorrow.
To the printer.
Anyway, yeah, they're, they're, those, those mailers are going out at, yeah.
And all the address stuff has been taken care of.
Right, yeah, Ben worked to make sure that we won't have this before.
So that some folks who can't get through postal patron will get an address to them.
Okay.
And just one other thing about voices that has come up, and I, and as we heard tonight, and just to, to, that I think that the, the voices group is really well poised to have these community conversations, so especially start and stop times came up tonight. There's some other things that the group is just, um, right now working on what kinda topics the community is interested in hearing about, and with the help of Reed and Sue, I think voices might be really helpful in, in having a, the kind of conversation that, that the community wants to have around us, so just to put it out there.
Right, and we're using voices to help with our safety, um, community conversations that will happen in the first week of April.
Yep, April fifth, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They have to double, triple check that.
We are having a meeting tomorrow with students who are invited to attend that to help plan for what that, how that could be meaningful from a student perspective as, as well.
Yeah. It occurs to me that there need to be some conversations about Black Lives Matter, and I'm, I, I think we'll probably talk about it on Monday, and then maybe connect to you.
Okay, that's great. I did receive an update from Michelle while we were meeting. She couldn't make it. She apologized. She had a late fast kickoff practice that she didn't know about. But she did say that she met with the group, the diversity club is taking the lead on that Black Lives Matter, uh, work right now. There are three hundred and fifty-one signatures as of today. She, as of today, they were talking about a one to three-week period of getting their thoughts together about what they wanted to do and, and bring to the board. So they're organizing themselves, and I would imagine they're gonna ask for a place on, um, to present to the board in, in the next, within the month.
So I think if you could communicate to her that we need a specific ask for the agenda, um, I think that would be helpful.
Okay, sure.
So we can avoid what happened tonight. Thanks. Anything else on communications?
I have one more added little quick thing. Brian put together a video of the vision and how it was made. It will go out to teachers on Monday for feedback and communication about that. It'll go to the public at the arts night on the fourteenth, and it will also be on our web with a Google Doc that they can go in, a Google form to give feedback on. So we're trying to get it out to as many, and it will go to students the week of March nineteenth during advisories.
In Rhode Island, apparently.
And it's going to Rhode Island, yes.
That little man's coming along with us.
Rockin' Man.
Great. I like the breadth of engagement. Thanks. Okay, superintendent staff update.
Yes, almost forgot that. So, um, I talked to you before at another meeting that I would bring to you, any turnover in staff. It's not that you're for approval, but it's just so that you know what's happening in the schools as, as staff turnover, or leave, or retire, or whatever. At ADL, we have a teacher, John Pontius, that is, has been hired as the Heinsberg Community School principal, and very proud of the work that he's done, and he's an amazing teacher. And good for him for becoming an administrator. There's not, that take that leap, not a lot that take that leap. ADL will certainly miss him, and the community will, but it's really good. I wished we had an opening for him, instead of having him escape to another SU, but I just wanted to let you know that that's.
Okay.
He's a new principal next year. Yeah.
State head of takes. Can I say ugh? So, um, it's been a bit discouraging this week to listen to what's coming out of the governor's office. It's pretty clear we're gonna have another end-of-the-session meltdown for education. And I frankly, I just, I politically can't see where this is going. For us, one of the things that seems to become up is ratios. We know our ratios are better than the kinds of numbers the administration has talked about, so I think that's one area we, our district doesn't have to particularly be concerned about. The House Ways and Means Committee passed a, a different funding proposal. It puts a surcharge on the income tax to raise, I think, between fifty and sixty million dollars. That would fill the fifty-million-dollar hole that was created when the governor and legislature used one-time money next year, last year. So were that to make it all the way through the process, our tax, our budget would result in decreased tax rates. I've looked at it pretty carefully. It seems, um, the, the mechanism itself seems like it would be fine for us. The biggest change will be for very high-spending districts or very low-spending districts. The very low-spending districts will get a tax break. The very high-spending districts will have to pay more, so they take away the excess spending penalty because they think their formula deals with it. There's some stuff on how teacher retirement in the bill that I'm concerned about. Dylan continues to be great about communicating with Kim and I, so I, I do feel like we have a good line right into the conversations. And it was frankly gratifying to hear the Chair of Ways and Means said, hey, all the things that I talked about in my testimony as reasons why they weren't going forward with their original plan. Granted, I wasn't the only one who said those things, but.
But you said.
Yeah. What else, Kim?
First, I think, I wanna thank you so much, Martha, for like truly understanding the complications that are being put forth, cause you understood the first round of the funding law so well, and you can dissect what we're getting that's coming to you and I in a way that I could not begin to, so I'm very grateful for that. In a meeting that I had earlier today for another board. Um, in a meeting that I had earlier today for another board I sit on, um, with the treasurer, she indicated that she is providing testimony or support to, um, the education funding considerations around retirement. And, um, that she doesn't care frankly who pays for it, whether it comes off the top of the ed fund or it gets billed to school districts as long as it in fact gets paid. So she's not rendering opinion on where that should come from. So that we're clear sort of where she stands on that. Um, but she's trying to provide some information as to how that's calculated and, and determined. Um, and that the money, the thousand dollars that we pay now for new hires is separate from that. It's related to the retiree health benefits. And that she would not envision that that would be, it, she's very strongly said she would not support that being removed or, or traded out for something because it's serving a different purpose.
So do you understand what the proposal is around retirement?
No, I don't.
I don't get it.
I just asked her, and it was, I mean, the board is the municipal employees retirement board that I'm on that I was having that conversation with her today. It is more directly a consideration on the, the, the teachers' retirement system board. Um, and so, but she was clear that what she is providing for context around ed funding with respect to retirement is that she will tell people how that needs to be calculated and that it needs to be paid. And it is not in exchange for that thousand dollars that is for new hires or whatever that number is. Um, and that that was intending to right the ship on the retiree health benefits.
Right, yeah. Um, yeah, and that, that's what Tom was talking to. Okay, questions, yes?
Is, so is this potential switching it from the general fund to the ed fund, is that going to put, we have to put more money in the budget to pay for this?
That's the way the bill is written, but it isn't exactly clear how. It's certainly not going to be the full cost of teacher retirement. Um, so I, I haven't actually gone back and read the language yet. Um, but it isn't clear to me nor to anyone else I've talked to exactly what they're talking about. Any other questions on what's happening at the state level? Okay, um, agenda for the twentieth. We know we're going to talk more deeply about early release days or whatever we may call them. Um, is there, is there something about voices coming forward? No. No, okay.
Uh, I do have one topic, I don't know if it should be an agenda item or not, but a question that we got emailed about kindergarten. Um, and kindergarten acceptance and how that's being handled as a new district. I'm wondering if we can get some clarification about how exactly that is being handled. Um, you know, I know.
Why don't we have Beth just say that right now?
Oh, say it right now?
Yeah.
Um, that was definitely a mistake and a misunderstanding on both parts as I looked into it. So what's happening at central office, and I think that's where the questions came, where the misunderstanding was, we are creating a unified form throughout the district and a unified, and a unified process. And the principals have been working on that with Erin McGuire, who oversees the preschool. Um, so they're working on that, um, on the process. We have, eventually, it'll be all aligned, so they're doing the same things. But some do different things for Essex Town has a kindergarten night, no one else has that. Um, so we're trying to unify it across. So when the questions were coming in, that's how our office was responding. Like, we don't have it unified yet, even though each school has a good process right now. We're trying to get it, just as we are doing with everything else. We just can't keep up with as much as we have to do for the merger.
Right, because, you know, we got that email and clearly there was some confusion from this mother who was checking in. And then in front porch forum, Peter Farrell posted literally that afternoon, "Come to kindergarten night at Essex Town, we give you all the information you need." And this seemed like this one woman who was like.
And they've always done that, yeah.
I have no idea what's happening. And then, you know, in another school, it was like, this is exactly what's happening, so.
And Summit, I'm sorry, Summit School should have been able to answer those questions. I'm not sure why she was directed to central office. I, I don't know.
It is being, you know, at the school.
It is, we're trying to get the unified form, we're taking pieces to unify it, but not all this year to unify.
Kaylee?
I think Marla, I'm going to first.
I, I still wanted to discuss the kindergarten on the agenda because if my memory isn't failing me, when we discussed merger, one of the important things about being a merged district was we were going to have one person at central office that all parents could call instead of this confusion.
That was pre-K.
That was pre-K.
That was pre-K.
Pre-K.
But we are also trying, we're doing that for K also. We just didn't have all the different information from every school and the way they do it differently. Now we have that.
So we can go where parents just call one person.
As that woman called, on a Google Doc, and principals were on it.
Kim?
So my experience of signing up for kindergarten was that it was hard to get information as early in the season as I wanted it. This was, I mean, Patrick and I both, like, our oldest is second grader, so it wasn't very long ago. Um, but there was some information available at the district level in Essex Junction simply because you don't know which school you should try to apply your kid to in the junction. So that was probably where she was coming from, is that you can't, if you were a new parent, which I don't think she is, you can't know which school you should be trying to contact because no one will tell you if you're a Summit or a Hiawatha family.
Right, and right now they're being directed to Summit because Suzanne, the principal, is the one with the experience in how to separate.
But yeah, when I first tried to assign my son up for kindergarten, Sarah Waite, the administrative assistant at Summit was like, "Call us back later, it's not the time of year to do this yet." So.
Okay. Um, all right, anything else for the agenda for the twentieth?
So are we putting kindergarten on it?
I don't think so.
I think as long as I know in the future, it'll be one person that people, so they get a uniform answer.
And they will.
And I had a question for an agenda item, another one. I was thinking when the Black Lives Matter conversation came up, I was thinking about the vision that we were given, um, last month or our last meeting. And I love that growing hearts and minds and the everyday whatever. And I was hoping and thinking that wouldn't it be wonderful to have our own EWSD flag?
Oh, we will have banners, Marla.
And that, to me, states it without having to do for this group or that group or having someone upset. Um, I just think we need our own design and our own flag now that we're all one district. And I fell in love with that, what you did, so.
Wait till you see Brian's video.
Did you do some circles?
Bubbles.
Bubbles, I'm sorry, did you do bubbles?
Okay, um, fourth message, fourth message to the community, um.
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah, I just, I don't think it's for the next meeting. And it was something that he, and Beth and I exchanged on it. But that, the GPA issue that had been circulating in social media for a while, but mostly had come out of the work in the fall, I just didn't, I didn't know where that was. I was checking in with Beth on status update. And I think in that it was a big sentiment that came out of the fall. I'm wondering, and we had talked about the possibility of being updated as a board as to where that stood.
I would suggest that Beth just put it in our notes, in the notes to us, as opposed to.
I guess I would ask that it's information that the public has driven the question on. It, I think if it's, if we're going to get it as board members, we need to have it as a public conversation.
What I suggested to Kim is if we had Rob come in April after he's had time to work with the faculty on it. Um, and I can't, I can't remember his timeline, but I thought it was March that they were working through that. So he'd have more information in April. But there's movement.
Yeah, and I know he told the parent who was the most active in the VFE group and pursuing this that he would be giving a presentation this, to the board in the spring. And that was the, that's what I think he's promised the community at this point. So April, April sounds.
Spring.
Spring, in most places.
He's shoveling off the fields.
All right, um, boring message to the community takeaways. Okay.
Policies?
Policies.
Policies, yeah. But, the, I think you should put something in about the annual meeting and the budget vote, uh, for sure. Isn't, well, we approve the warning and then under approving the warning, you can put all of that. Um, and, um, I think start, start, stop times and the fact that you can, um, Brian, I assume that presentation you did tonight will be available somewhere.
Yeah.
So if you can link that, I think that would be really good. Um, and talk about the fact that we committed to having some kind of public engagement around that subject.
And the resolution?
And the, and the resolution, I think, would be the other thing. Okay, all right.
I have just one question about the resolution. We now, we now need to send it, should I, do you want me to do that?
You can modify it.
If there's one modification, I can.
Yeah, Michael Surrattin's name is spelled wrong, too.
Okay.
Um, so are we going to email it?
That's the question, do we, we don't have to do this right now, maybe, or I don't?
Let's talk after.
Okay.
Move your tab.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you just repeat what the communication messages? It sounds like an awful lot. We're talking about annual meeting and the vote, that I hear start and stop times.
Yeah.
Policies and that a public engagement promise.
Public engagement around the start and stop times.
Around, so that'll be part of it, okay. And then the resolution on the gun violence? So you're doing more than three.
Okay.
Joint form.
No, just.
Every chance we go.
Yeah, I think, I, I don't, did we say policy in there? Because that would maybe be less important. Like, if we're going to ask when, because it's not the second meeting, it's not up for whatever. I just, I think if it gets too lengthy or put at last, so that it doesn't get, um, so that people don't stop reading before they either get to the budget vote. Or, I mean, I think the update on the student walkout is something a lot of people are here to hear about. So if people were here to hear about it, I think we probably want to bullet about in our takeaways. Where did we have our interest sitting in this room? Because that's the interest that's circling around the community right now.
Yeah, um, but the thing about policies is the next time we act on them is the final time. So if people have something they want to say about them, this is the opportunity. You could just link to them as, you know, you could just have a sentence that links to them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, another thing around the up, doing an update around the walkout is that the takeaways will probably not be out when the walkout happens. So I'm not sure how.
That's true.
Useful they then become once the event has already occurred or passed. Because I typically will finish those up on a Wednesday. And then Ben won't get them up and posted until Thursday or Friday.
Yeah.
And they're on schedule because this is.
Yeah, because they're just a meeting.
Kaylee?
I was just going to say that I was under the impression that most people were here for the start and stop times conversation because that's what they all left after. Um, and that they just happened to participate because it's nice to participate in conversations about interesting topics when you're there for them.
Uh, we know that there were definitely people here around the gun resolution and definitely in Black Lives Matter and the student walkout. Because I got an email from the two women sitting there. I think I realized after the fact it was one of them. On, anyway, that ahead of time asking about it. And it was specific to the march out, not Black Lives Matter, actually. And I, you know, it doesn't matter however. People, they were interesting topics and it was a meaty conversation around student matters, so. That was awesome.
Um, well, if it doesn't get too lengthy, I think, you know, just a couple of sentences of what the students plan, what's being planned for students who don't want to participate. And the fact that, um, security has been taken into consideration, something like that. Okay, all right, I will entertain a motion that we go into executive session to discuss the student discipline.
I'm still awake.
Thanks, Liz, it's a very neat discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Of those saying aye. Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.